Peter.
Peter, replying of the United States and America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, uncounted, in this hope with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for joining. A couple housekeeping topics. One, as you heard, we are being recorded. Any personal conversations need to be had outside if we have to, if we have the disruption, we have to stop the meeting and I will ask people to leave. If you are coming up or if you're making public comment, we'll have you come to the podium, state your name for the record. And then you'll be given two chances to have comment and we will let you know as soon as those come around. With that, I will go ahead, we'll jump right in. We do have a forum. Everybody is here today. And is there any other business items that need to be added? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I think the motion, we are to consent agenda.
I'll second that.
The move by Rebecca and seconded by Kathy. Any discussion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Motion carries. All right, we will move into department reports. So City Hall.
I didn't do a write and report, but. So we had Cindy Philbrook picked up all of the binders and hand sanitizer for the back pool thing that she does. Yeah. And I think Connor and I will start painting the front of the building over the next week or two. I know that was the last thing that we had planned to do. So while we have some decent weather. And so we did hear back from Civic Plus. There was a few questions from the attorneys and some final stuff for City Hall. Once we respond to those, they'll have a draft out to us probably by the end of the month. I gave you guys some folders. So when budget comes out, we'll start with revenue. And so I know a couple of you have asked about some budget stuff. So there is our fee schedule in there. Like a tentative budget schedule with workshop and then our revenue report. And so if you guys want to look that over, I know there was a lot of questions on bars at the last workshops. And I felt like we kind of double did workshops because the first one was discussions on what kind of revenue we had. And then the second one was to come back and kind of look at it. So. If you guys want to take some time over the next couple of weeks and get familiar, if you have questions on bars or what is what? If you guys want to shoot me emails so we can just be ready to jump into revenue and have a lot of the smaller stuff. Out of the way, that'd be great. Um. And I think the guys will report next meeting, but hydrant testing is complete. And. And once it gets cleared from the fire department, I know that people with their homeowners insurance to be able to get more of a reduction. So I'll have them give a full report on that, but. All right.
Yeah, I'll say.
No, I was gonna say, does somebody have any suggestions for?
So the whole is.
Okay. Sorry. They're all good.
And are we hoping to get through the changes before we start hot and heavy on the budget, which looks to be October?
You're talking about the ones that need to be changed for in order for our book to be complete.
Yeah, we kind of have a review. Right. I know we already.
Yeah, there will be some that we have to put out. I think we'll probably just knock them out in one meeting because it's not going to be. There shouldn't be a lot of discussion. It's just. This is where your conflicts and so this is what needs to happen. It shouldn't really be.
And we have a goal for when that public hearing is for that or?
Um, no, we'll just, yeah, because I'm not really exactly when.
I just have one more comment to the first budget workshop. It's listed as Monday, September twenty second, and I would love to keep it that way. But that's a week after our second council meeting.
Yeah, and like I said, it's tentative, so I'll make, I'll make note of that, but. Maybe we'll keep it. Okay.
She's asking nicely.
We'll keep it.
Great. All the questions. Perfect. So we will jump into council reports. And the only thing I have to report is just to make sure everybody is aware, since the first is Labor Day, our council meeting will be held on Tuesday, the second. On it?
Nothing for me.
September.
Yes. I have this.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Rebecca?
Just a reminder that Northbound, I have five trucks coming through tomorrow night and the night after. So if you're wandering out of the bar closing time or going for a midnight walk, I suggest not trying to cross, let me drag.
Can I extend on that? And if you're trying to sleep, it really helps to think of it like the ocean.
Yeah.
That really did actually work.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy?
I think it's nice that the trucks can just roll through, so you don't have to hear a scream and then.
And again.
It's okay.
And blood, yeah.
And blood drive, right? Oh, Community Blood Drive Friday. It's held at the LDS Church, eleven thirty to five. And there are a few spots left for donations.
Thank you. Anything?
Um, I'm just sending out an email to Jay about the inventory tags. And I did a little research and there's a few companies you can go to, but there's one in particular that. I'm pretty happy with. They have barcodes. So. Taking inventory every year would be.
Scanned, yes. Okay, that's really sad. Thank you. Thank you for finding that. All right, so we will go ahead and jump into committee reports. Anything from Planning Commission?
I'm Steve Burks, Chair of the Planning Commission. As you know, we spent most of the last year and a half working on the twenty year growth minute in the plan. And it's finally coming to a conclusion. We should be seeing our final documents on a college for tomorrow's meeting. And after that, we should get a full copy to review. I believe we go to public hearing at Planning Commission in September so that you will be able to do so once again, I think in November. So that's all we have. That should be a compilation of all the re- recoding and zoning and et cetera.
I will.
That is crazy amount of work.
Yes, I'm gonna say thank you for all of that. Meeting's on Wednesday, not tomorrow. Yeah.
Yes.
With.
All right, so we'll go ahead and jump into the park board. Do you wanna?
Hey, Melissa, we're here and we have twenty four sponsors this year, which is up from last year. We have raised between all of the raffle tickets, the people that are going to be walking, all of our sponsors money, all of that. Over two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Nice.
We're doing pretty good and we're gonna have more going on on the day of. I ordered fifteen experts that we can sell and the family has. Called dibs on most of them. So it's definitely be going towards being able to get those doors replaced at the, um, at the masters. They sell.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump on down. No public hearing, no special presentation. We will ask for any public comment on our agenda items. That is the ordinance, ordinance eight twenty seven, the park board member recommendation. And then the other business, which is the Greater Toledo Heritage Horizons discussion.
I would love.
Okay. I have the video for you to watch. I was just, I don't know, I didn't, no, I watched. At the meeting.
Steve Burks commenting upon the. Greater Toledo Heritage and Horizons discussion. I guess my first question is, is who would, who are the actual sponsors of that? Is that part of this Lewis County? Chamber of Commerce? Is that you through general?
I'm sorry, I didn't agree with your question.
What are the names for the heritage? Names?
Yeah, who is? You mean the board members, directors?
Right.
Yeah, myself, Larry Davidson, Joe Notch, and Dan Gordon.
Okay, very good. As you know, we've spent about a year and a half working on our growth management plan, which covers the next twenty years. It includes our urban reserves, our urban growth areas. And we took great pains to, week after week. Go through our various zoning. And use. allocations for not only our current urban growth area, but for the future urban growth areas and urban reserve. Taking this out to highway five. I first heard of the presentation. Given by these folks at Vision Toledo. I got an email from. Mike Morgan indicating that they had made a presentation there. And subsequent to that, I heard that they had contacted the county. With regards to their presentation. And then I watched on YouTube the presentation given to the city council two weeks ago. Unfortunately, at no point in time during their presentations or their gathering of information, did they ever step foot into the planning commission? To talk about what their desires might be or where we might cooperate or what our intentions were, although I know they have been given that opportunity. Looking at it from a purely financial standpoint. It's a hundred million dollar development, all good and old, and I don't know how many nationwide charitable. Organizations that have went to fund Toledo for something like that. The Christian part of me wants to think that this is a very altruistic. Presentation on the things that we might do in the city. The developer side of me says this is not. It's a land grab. To take the civic center and move it away from the land that the city owns along the river. And my personal opinion is the city would be daft. A D A F T. Do you ever consider selling that property? Leasing perhaps, but not so. There are indications they want, there are parcels that we don't own that they want to develop.
Yep. Take a second.
Such as putting a theater at the park. At Wallace Pond that we don't own. And moving a senior center, which actually is on county property. So. I just wanted to make you aware of those. Ramifications and. I indeed look forward to them coming forward to explain them.
We will be bringing this to Planning Commission too. I was trying to get through the compliance stuff, so that is next to bring in two guys.
All right. Okay, so we will go ahead and move on down. So we'll jump right into new business. First up is ordinance number eight two seven, an ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington, amending Toledo Municipal Code section ten. Point two zero, point zero three zero to designate one ADA compliant accessible parking space in front of City Hall. And prescribing enforcement authority. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept ordinance number eight two seven.
I'll second that.
Then move by Rebecca and seconded by Eric. I will go ahead and open it up for discussion. Of course, I, I mean, we do need to get compliance, so I one hundred percent.
I just have one correction and it might have already been done under ten point twenty. Point oh three oh. It says it's on the west side of South Second Street and I believe it's actually.
North Second, yeah.
Yep, we updated that because she not responding to yours.
I talked about things. I just didn't see it. Oh, it is.
It's.
How many first and stops? Does City Hall actually have?
None, right now.
Oh, how many designated?
Yeah, I think there's four.
Right.
Two and two, yeah.
Another discussion before I call for the vote?
Well. I just wanted to clarify. Eric and I had a discussion. The last meeting. Which spaces were going to be in. It differed from Rachel and I. And so. My understanding was the one right out front is going to be. Public two hour parking. Where's the one behind it who's going to be? The. ADA.
I think that's what I had, that's what I thought we said as well. And that's what this represents, right? The south, the south landing. The one that's by the.
Right, so where you're, you're parked currently?
No, she's parked on the north one.
Okay.
It seems to me that ADA one should be next to.
The driveway because it's already.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, because it's already got the.
It's rammed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm right directly out front.
Yeah.
So you have the two hour.
Two hour.
Yeah.
Now that we all have it straight. Because if you say northwest and south, I have no realization.
Intersection is ADA. All right, any other discussion before I call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Park Board Member Recommendation. I would entertain. Well, again. Would somebody like to?
I'll make a motion that we accept Anne McGrann as a park board member.
I'll second it.
Move by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. And does anybody have any questions?
No. Last meeting, I was under the impression that we were already full. So did we lose one or now we're full or?
Now it's full.
Yeah, or did we add more?
We will be.
We had two vacancies.
That we were trying to fill. We did fill one.
Oh, so it still is.
Yes.
So now.
No, any question?
As long as she's.
Just want to be on the same page as everybody else.
No?
Is Anne here?
Yes. All right, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, perfect.
Welcome.
Um, so no unfinished business. So we'll jump into other business, which is the Greater Toledo Heritage and Horizons discussion.
Does somebody have something on that?
Yeah, somebody else has something on that? No? Okay, I have something I'm gonna read just so I can get it right. So. History and character is absolutely strength of Toledo. That much I believe we can all agree on. The presentation reminded us of that with the top of the river, of the steamboat. Of the heritage Toledo is proud of. But that heritage lives right here by the river, not at the hill on the way to the freeway. There have been some important changes recent, in recent years, many of which I've worked and councils worked to bring forward. But for me, it's always been with one measure in mind. Is this long term good for our residents and does it make life better for them? This proposal, I feel, doesn't, I do not think it passes that test. The ability to walk to the services that pull this community together matters deeply. I've been told by many, I've been told many of our seniors walk to the senior center. Our residents can reach City Hall, Valley View, the bank, the post office, the Napa store, the grocery store, our restaurants. All without getting in a car. That's part of what makes Toledo special. If you move the core services up the hill, my fears, the rest will follow. Yes, growth is going to happen up the hill on the way to I five and we need to continue to be diligent in shaping. It as it represents itself, as it presents itself. But we've seen other towns that by chasing to the freeway first, they have hollowed out their core, their historic centers. For years. And I don't believe that's a mistake that Toledo needs to make. Don't get me wrong, I'm all about, I'm all for building a more vibrant core. I liked a lot of what I saw in there. But the city already lands, owns the land here. And there's been talk of some kind of a public private project that could blend a new city hall with storefronts, a gathering place and a boardwalk. That kind of idea, that kind of idea is worth pursuing and I believe many would welcome collaboration in that direction. But it has to be done the right, the right way, not something decided outside of Toledo and handed to us, but by working with the people who live here. And the city that represents them. If we straight, stay rooted in what serves our residents first. We'll keep Toledo's heritage alive while making room for the right kind of growth. Listen to the AMR.
Yeah, I, if you recall at the last meeting or whenever the presentation was. I kept stressing, have you contacted the planning board? Because I felt that they should be in cooperation with the planning board for any type of big development that they're planning. So I'm fully in support of, of what Steve had to say earlier.
And it. And it is an issue that the county owns the park across the river. That is not city property.
They were really close to giving it to us in twenty nineteen and then COVID happened and then they got a bunch of funding for parks, but the way the county swings. You know, they'll, a couple of years, they'll be tired of the park again because it costs them a lot to maintain. They're. A lot more than it would cost us to maintain. Yes. So I think that is a future thing, but it's not a now thing.
And I definitely do think. If at any point the city, even I mean, long after I'm gone, if they do get the opportunity to bring the park back into city, I'm like, that is. I mean, any of us that grew up here spent time at Wallace's pond. Like, that was a staple for kids growing up. Like, that should be part of Toledo's heritage, Toledo's history, Toledo's future. In some capacity. So again, that's just my two cents. If first, you know, if it doesn't happen while I'm in office, totally fine. But that is something I would love to see someday as I grow older. Did anybody else have anything on that?
Yeah, comment.
Come on up to that.
I got Larry Davidson, Greater Toledo, Horizon. I want to emphasize that this is a proposal. Okay, we as a group are a nonprofit charitable organization. We are filed and pending five oh one C three. Our goal is not to disrupt everything that's going. And I think we said in the video that. Our proposal is not to change the cell, but help it improve with vitality and growth. We all know there's four dams upstream on this river. Should ever, and one of those break. Your whole city services are gone. They wouldn't even be able to respond with people in the city. So that's a big, major concern. Now, I don't scare anybody. That's not a scare tactic. Likelihood of that happening is probably not very high, but it could happen someday. But setting that aside, what we're really focused on is using the heritage. To enhance the city core. You mentioned the travel time for seniors. If there was a senior center up on the hill, which is safer location. It's clustered in our proposal, and again, it's just a proposal. It's clustered with the other city services, the main services. And a senior center up there could very well have a van that commutes downtown Seattle or downtown Toledo. And that's out to the senior center on a routine basis to provide that access they still need and still want. So we don't want to cut anybody off in that sense. So the vision that we're looking at is how to enhance the greater area, not just Toledo. Because Toledo isn't the focus totally here. It's the greater Toledo community. A lot of people live outside of Toledo and are very seriously impacted by what goes on in Toledo relative to its growth. And so they need to be a part of that as well. Now, when you talk about the sites we located out by I five. A small industrial park, you notice those were designated under what we call Lambert. Local area for more intense rural development. There are serious restrictions on how big that can be. So moving everything out to the freeway and becoming a big center out there isn't going to happen because it doesn't meet the Growth Management Act of Washington. The Lambert does, which allows buildings of, say, fifteen thousand square foot size and a limited number of buildings. So what we're not proposing is that to be, do these big developments out there. No big warehouses, no big box stores. What we propose is a small welcoming community out there to bring tourists into the city to utilize services here. And help the revenue of the city grow. And help it expand. Now, what we're talking about was Wallace Pond and Park. In fact, in our proposal. We actually call it the Wallace Heritage Pond. Or, I'm sorry, how? Wallace Heritage Park. Because we want to see that maintained as a park. We know this, the county has been talking about surplusing the property. We don't want it to go to the developer. We don't want apartments. We don't want big stores. We don't want anything over there except park. The one that they're posing, it's to continue to develop the park with a few additional features. If any of you have been out there at the park lately, you'll notice it's in a very bad disrepair because the county is not taking care of it. Under a five oh one C three, you can now raise funds, raise funds to help with those sorts of things. The projects we've laid out as a potential goal to bring in revenue is one to acquire that park. Under the five oh one C three. It's future to build a big park. But one of the first steps would be maintenance is badly needed on the park. For example, the pond itself is in bad shape. It needs an irrigation pump. That would be one of the first projects out of the gate. If we get the funding for it to aerate that pond and make it safer for people to use it. The other was to build a small rental facility. You would allow people to have access to small paddle boats or maybe canoes so they can go out and navigate on the pond. And be fun and for the family. If you've been out there, there's some sixty different picnic tables. Of which I wouldn't want to sit on them because it's pretty fall through. One of the first things would be get those picnic tables in shape so they're just decent for the community. The Steamboat Theater offers an opportunity for education of the local community, education of tourists. Education on the heritage of Toledo. That brings the park closer to Toledo and I think in the video, but we talked about the fact. It's not competing with the city. It's completing it. It's part of Toledo's heritage. So if we can put a steamboat theater out there, that allows a theater for summer events for, for example, the school kids. They can put on plays. They can put on small little music concerts. For example, the Bluegrass Festival, which has to utilize the high school area, would now actually have a stage with some changing rooms in them. To be able to perform there. Those are the kinds of activities that we see in this proposal. Again, it's a proposal only. When it comes to the city, we as a five oh one C three cannot raise funds. To do what the city, what we're proposing for the city. The city has to take care of that. Working with the developer, for example, that's one solution. So we can be a facilitator. We can help you. And that's what we're offering when it comes to the idea of relocating, you know, sitting core that we can make into an old town. That is sensible for Toledo itself and involving the residents of Toledo in that whole decision making process. And the planning of what we call Founder's Landing. Does that we call Founder's Landing? No. So what we're offering is that, that ability to improve.
What I would recommend, I mean, you guys do bring up. A lot of good points as well, but I think working. Alongside with. Some of the planning commission members is going to be. Kind of how we meet that middle ground to make it come to life. Again, like I said, I believe that the pond should become part of the city, but we also. Have to look at it from a liability standpoint as well.
Exactly.
That's, you know, and that's a thing like with paddle boat rentals and things like that. If that's incorporated in the city, then that puts a huge liability on the city if something goes on.
I believe Larry was talking about a five oh one C three on.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it would, it would remain under five oh one C three, Greater Toledo Heritage Horizons, which is tightly. Coupled with the city. I mean, that's what the whole five oh one C three is about. Now, there was a comment last time when we presented. About, have you talked to the planning commission? Well, no, we're kind of following the hierarchy here. We decided to come to the city council first.
You went to the county first.
Well, let me, let me back it. We went to the county first about the sites out by the freeway. Not the Toledo core necessarily we are removing. We mentioned we're looking at these other things we'd like to do. But we came to the top down in the structure, the city council first. We didn't want you guys to be surprised that we went to the planning commission. You didn't know anything about it.
I invited Dan to urgently go to the planning commission because of where we are in the twenty year plan and said.
Okay.
The businesses come to us and say, make it better. And I told him. Come, come to planning commission.
Okay.
Tell, tell us what better means.
Yeah.
And we heard, and they heard nothing.
Well, you guys are not coming informed as a corporation. I mean, this is brand new, okay? And on top of that, we were expecting to be on the planning commission next on their agenda. The fact Rachel suggested that and I talked to her today about that and said, you know, are we on it for this week or the next week or when can we be on that? Because yes, we're like, we want to work with people.
It's one, yeah, yeah. It's one thing to pitch. It's one, yeah, yeah. It's one thing to pitch them, but, but I, excuse me for a moment, but what you, what you missed is. Is the urban reserve that, that we, the planning commission has been working hard to get. The, the path from here to the freeway figured out. So to go to the county, you've, you've just kind of stepped on top of what's already in play and, and sounds like you don't even know about it.
No.
So.
I, I understand that. But what was happening was the county was about to close their comprehensive plan. And it wasn't going to be urban reserved anymore when we talked to them. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
We're fully aware of that.
It was going to be clustered tourists. Is the designation they were making out of the freeway on the same space we're talking about.
You're talking about the east side of the freeway?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the east side of the freeway, right on the corner between five oh five and one oh five. And the county was already planning to make that cluster tourists.
I think the hierarchy though is the planning commission first, because they're, they're the ones that are working on all of that with the county. And then they present it to us as a council. We, we rely on them a lot for their knowledge and the work that they put into. The, the twenty year comp plan, and so they're gonna have a better feel for everything you're talking about, so.
Okay, well, I understand and I appreciate that and I'm fine with that. I have to admit, I'm new to the political structure of the city of Toledo. And had I known that, we'd gone straight to them first and then come to you folks with the presentation. It's a little hard when you're trying to get something out there new to get. Everybody knowledgeable at the same time.
Sure.
I mean. We could have said, let's have the big Toledo committee, community meeting and we'll just spring it on everybody. Well, I don't like to do that. I like to have discussions like this. Or we have working discussions about how we can work together. And how we can resolve it and how we can generally improve the city. We don't have all of the answers today, but like the solutions for the seniors traveling back and forth. A small shuttle van if you relocate it up there, or you know, just. Other ideas like getting metro transit involved from Los County, those sorts of things. Now, county, um, you know, we have issues with them because. You know, they're in control of the park. We know they want to. Unburden themselves at the park. And. They're inclined to, to surplus it out, which means it becomes open to highest bidder. Now, I've been in, in researching that then to make sure. That there seems to be ways that would restrict the highest bidder being some developer coming in and just wholesale developing the area. You know, so our plan doesn't talk about building a lot of buildings and everything else. It talks about maintenance and upkeep. It talks about repairs and it talks about a few little things. That are more active, uh, available things for the, the local community to, to take advantage of. Make it more.
So, so the stronger path for that isn't, isn't the branding five oh one C going to propose something to the county. It's the branding five oh one C coming to the city and having the city go with, with you to the county. Right? Because, I mean, it's not just Toledo, it's how municipalities work, and trust me, I knew nothing about it four or five years ago, and now I understand it's. It's a quagmire and it moves very slowly and it's, and if you don't do it the right way, you can knock on the wrong door all day long. So that. That's why I, I, I was just like, oh, yeah.
Well, we try not to step on anybody's toes, trust me. We've been trying to find ways to get the ideas out there that include not just the city of Toledo, but the greater community.
I asked a question then, Larry, why would you go to Vision Toledo first?
We did not do Vision.
You did. So now you've got all these citizens. That are coming to me and other people saying, this is such a great idea. Why aren't we doing this? And you make us look like the bad guys. If this doesn't actually turn out that way. The planning commission has spent a great amount of time and effort trying to see our way through the next twenty years.
Yeah.
To do a lot of the things that your heritage association would like to see happen. Uh, we have rezoned down Front Street or First Street, so that there is mixed use there. We have made mixed use of our land going up five oh five, so that.
Yeah.
Auctions offices and things can go in there and dentist offices can go in there. But you wouldn't know any of that, because nobody from your organization, and Joe's been around long enough, he knows what we do. And we've talked about some of the things, some of the things that you have are very good ideas. Wallace Pond would. Bring a lot of benefits to the city if we had it. Money wise, I don't know how that's gonna happen. You know, we're trying to do a sewer down Fifth Street and we're trying to find money to do our sewer plan.
So these, this is actually why I would like for you to go, so these conversations can be had, a planning commission where they, where they should be had.
Yeah, we'd be happy to.
Okay.
And like I said, you know. We got it out of sequence and I apologize, we got it out of sequence. Uh, but yet, our motives are just to improve the community and make it better for the families and family utilization. And help revitalize it. That's where the real goal is. And it's for everybody in Toledo, but also in the surrounding community.
Yeah, we definitely.
You know. There's so many organizations in Toledo right now. I mean, there's other foundations and others. Who do you start with? That's, that's.
Exactly, yeah, so.
And to me, going to the heart of the city is going to the council to be honest.
Yeah, so I, I would definitely say get with, get with planning commission as well, um, and then we can definitely. Uh, you know, it's not something that we're saying, no, we just.
Yeah.
Have, get you with the right avenue first, and then it's something we can revisit.
And we're happy to talk to anybody at any time about any of this and continue to share what we see as a, a. Nice proposal, but again, it's just a proposal.
Yeah. October, we'll get you on the October meeting, because I believe September will be our last meeting.
Yeah, that's.
For, um. For our conference.
Yeah, and we don't represent any developers.
Yeah.
We're. Going to be a five oh one C three as soon as the IRS gets their backside in gear.
Yeah.
Done and stuff. Uh, and that's the way we would continue in the future. And any funding we raise, I, I said it before the last meeting, our intent is to look outside of this area for funding.
Uh huh.
Way outside this area, so that we don't impact the other local. Units like Vision Toledo. I get this name wrong, Toledo Heritage, Community Heritage, I think it's called. Or, um, you know, any, a number of the others nonprofits. That rely on funding from the local community.
Yeah.
Understand that's very limited, and we don't want to impact the other organization.
Okay, yeah, definitely get with them and then we'll, we'll revisit.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Kind of, kind of odd, but I've only been here seven years and, and people have alluded to the fact that I've come in and, come in and changed Toledo. But the reality is, the thought of moving the center of Toledo up the hill breaks my heart. I mean, truly does. And that's, that's, that's the reaction you're seeing from me. I, 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 you, I, in my head, I've got pictured a lot of what you showed. I mean, I could imagine. This entire, from here to the river as, you know, as, uh, as little bricks. Was, you know, little weave bricks and wa- and shops and walking area. But with city hall tucked in somewhere. Right? The, the fire station's gotta move and they know they have to move and they know why, and they're gonna move up out of the flood plain. We can't move all the residents out of the flood plain, so. Why would we take their services? So that's.
Just so everybody knows, that doesn't know before, I do about the rest now, so my looks will be.
Alright, so we will go ahead and move in, so, um, to public input. I know that there was, um, are they printed out over there too? The public comments. Uh, no, but they're online. Okay. Yeah, and. Yeah, they're in the pocket online. Um, does anybody else have public input? Come up to the podium and you're given three minutes.
Um, my name's Carolyn Garvin from Los County Public Health and Social Services, and I just wanted to share a little bit about an event that we're hosting. Um, the Los County Open Week Summit. It's on, um, I think I might have sent you all an email already, but, um, it's on September seventeenth. Um, from nine to four at Centralia College, and it's open to everybody in, in the community, uh. Whether you're a healthcare provider, um, city council, just some of the community who's interested in learning a little bit. Um, we are going to have some experts on the topic to, um, to, to talk about the crisis. Um, we'll have a lived experience panel, um. Where those folks will be able to share a little bit about their, um, experience, their recovery. And then we'll have resource tables for folks to just learn about the different resources in the community. And again, it's on September seventeenth from nine to four at Centralia College in the Trans Alta Commons. Um, it's completely free and lunch will be provided. And then, um, we are also having at night a special invite-only dinner. Um, you guys will all receive formal invitations. I'll probably drop them off. Sometime this week, um, and that one's invite-only, so we'll have just some key community leaders. So you'll have city council. Um, other elected officials, like Port County Commissioners, um, principals, superintendents. Um, other, like the health agencies where, and then we'll have a speaker there. Um, Jason Shepherd from Riverside Fire Authority, and he is gonna kind of talk about. You know, his. His experience working on the front lines of the crisis, and it will also give folks, um, the opportunity to ask some questions. Um, and lunch will be provided as well, and that will be at Centralia College, Centralia College in the Trans Alta Commons. Um, from six to seven. And you guys will receive invitations for that one as well. Caroline Garvin.
Thank you for letting us know. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You might also reach out to, uh, our representative. Marie Perez.
Oh, yes, um, they're all, um, they're all on the list. So we have like Peter Roverno, um. John Brown. We have Maria Cantwell.
Patty Murray.
Patty Murray, yeah, so we sent them all invites, so, um, I hope you're not okay to go. We had it last year. And we had actually a pretty good turnout, um, and then if. You know, those, some of those higher folks who attended, they could send someone from our office, which was really nice. So. We had about a hundred and, we had about two hundred people attend the day portion last year and about fifty, um. Um, attended, um, invite only, and the invite only is, um, only the first seventy five people who are S V P, so you guys will get those invitations shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'd ask for a special presentation, we could have put you at the top.
Yeah.
Next time.
Alright, any other?
Earl Birch, Toledo Thursday Market. I guess things are on both topics. From a market perspective, the idea that's being floated, I kind of like it. I have seen cities that have. Very open walkway. Uh, restaurants all over the place, and then everything gets shut down for a Saturday or a Friday market, and the market comes in and it's a very good thing. I've also seen cities where the downtown was gutted and thirty years later it still goes down. So whatever. Actions you all decide. I think a healthy dose of skepticism has been paranoia may be in order. Uh, I spoke with Tessa Johnson, who manages the senior center. And. After. Uh, a few minutes of conversation, her response was basically unprintable. The county owns the property where the senior center is. We have less than no desire to be. Moved, shuttled, anything involves. Speaking from the market standpoint, we have a lot of. Our customers who are also seniors, who also come in, uh, using nutrition. Senior nutrition, and then head on up to the senior center. So. You know, I've heard spoken just how strong this is a walking community. And I think if. The guts of it are picked up and moved, I think that's gonna basically be destroyed. The idea could be floated that whatever development comes to be here. As, you know, it's gonna take a jillion dollars anyway, add a second floor. Keep your. City hall up there, keep the senior center where it is, because really at the whole heart of all of this. It's decades and decades and decades of people being used to having their lives centered down here. And to pick it up and move it, I think needs to have some. There needs to be a different way. That whole outdoor thing can be accomplished without gutting our own town downtown. That would be a real strong possibility, you know, good way to go. From the market perspective and the senior's perspective. Just picking it up and shoving it somewhere else and seeing if we can shove it less.
Anybody else? Alright, if there is no further, we, no executive session this evening, so I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion we adjourn?
That's okay, moved by Eric and seconded by Jamie. All those in favor?
I.
Supposed. Right, meaning adjourned.